Well, good morning, everyone. So good to see you and to have you participate in your county government. This time I'll call the Paulding County Work Session for February the 27th to order. And Brian, if you bring the list forward, if you've got your phone on, good time to turn it off. Thanks, sir. It's good to have City Councilwoman Doris Debbie with us this morning. And also, we've got a, you can tell we've got a hole in our, in our circle or in our panel here, and Commissioner Brian Stover is here with us. I'll have to recognize him because we miss you, Brian. All right, so I'm privileged to have our county attorney, Jason Phillips, bring us the invocation and lead us in our pledge. Stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we just come to you now, and as we always do, we ask for your divine guidance in this room as this morning, as these commissioners weigh the pros and cons of various things that have been placed on this agenda, and we pray for your divine guidance for that, Lord. Lord, this week, you know, Georgia's been a little bit shaken by, by the death of Lake and Riley. Lord, we ask that you would be with her family as they prepare for a funeral this week to celebrate her life, and we ask you to comfort them in their loss, Lord. We ask you to be with our public safety folks who are out there at the cutting edge of these situations, and we ask that you would protect them, help them to make the split-second decisions that they need to make to stop acts like this, Lord, and we ask that you would protect them while they do that. Put a hedge around them, Father. Lord, we also come to you now as we are in the midst of qualifying for Post Four. Lord, in Romans 13, you have said that all authority is ordained by you, and, Lord, we ask that you would lay upon the hearts of the voters of Paulding County, the person that you want to take this spot in Post Four. Lord, we ask that your divine guidance guide that person, that man or woman who may come to fill these, to fill these big shoes, Lord, and we'd ask you to give them the wisdom to do it. We thank you, Lord. We lift these things up in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason, for getting it started off correctly. Minutes, February 13, 2024, the work session minutes for that day, and then the February 13th, the board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, we have a team Paulding segment here. That's about elections, of course, which we're all thinking about. I already voted. Led the elections board, we've got some other members of the board here, led by Deidre Holden, so we'll watch this video together. It's called Reach the Peach.
We're excited to start our Reach the Peach campaign this year. This was born out of a staff retreat that we had back in December, and we were planning for 2024 and what we would like to see. And of course, the number one thing is, is we want to see the voters. So one of our staff members, Jessica Lord and her team, came up with Reach the Peach because that is the final goal, is to get the peach sticker. So that was where that was born, and we have taken it and run with it, and we hope the voters will come out and reach their peach and wear their sticker very proud. This will go through this year, and we'll probably just continue using Reach the Peach because it is such an important thing to do, vote and reach the peach. I come from a military family, and I think about my grandfather who fought in World War II. You know, there's people who've died for us to keep this right to be able to vote, and that's enough incentive and encouragement for me and for my family to get out and vote, and it should be for others. You know, voting is a very precious, fundamental right. A lot of countries would love to have the right that we have. So it's important that the voters of Paulding County know that your vote matters, your vote counts. Please get out and cast your vote. Every election is important.
Good job, Jeff Harkins and your team, and Deidre, that's exceptional. Thank you. Invited guests, we have none. Bid awards, item number two on the agenda is to approve the purchase of a Caterpillar D3 LGP Bulldozer from Yancey Brothers in the amount of $174,814. This capital purchase was approved in the fiscal year 2024 capital budget for Paulding County DOT, and will be funded using general funds. Ms. Tabitha Pollard, to enlighten us a little bit more.
Good morning. This is just a routine purchase. DOT did receive three bids ranging from $174,814 up to $178,360. They would like to request an award to the lowest bidder of Yancey Brothers in the amount of $174,814, and it was included in the 2024 budget.
All right, and item number three is to award the SPOLOST purchase of 17 2025 Ford Interceptor SUVs to Hardy Family Ford in the amount of $801,905.98. Ms. Pollard.
This is also a fairly routine purchase. Before, the vehicles were hard to get our hands on. We ordered an annual replacement every year, and last year, we were not able to get to that window, so the last time we've done this is 2022, and those, we ordered 15 at that time. We have a total amount of PPVs, so there are police vehicles of 119 in the sheriff's office, and a total fleet in the sheriff's office of 215. So I tell you that, and about 87 of them are over 10 years old. So I tell you that to kind of give you an idea of why there's 17 in this particular request, and the average mileage of a surplus vehicle is about 174,000 miles. So they use them as long as they can on the road, and then they make admin vehicles out of them to get a few more miles out of them, and then they declare them surplus. So this is an attempt to replace some of the older vehicles that they're currently dropping. And we had, I guess I should mention that we compare this with state award, state contracts. So the state contract, state issues a bid for police vehicles. We're allowed to purchase off of that bid, and that amount was $48,154, and Hardy has agreed to sell these vehicles for $47,170.94.
Any questions? Thank you, Tabitha. Bid award item number four is DOT and Finance recommend award of the 2024 Asphalt Project Contract One to the lowest bidder, Bartow Paving Company Incorporated, in the amount of $7,632. Let me start over. Road scheduled in the contract located in Post Two and Post Four. Funding of the project will be from fiscal year 2024 LMIG grant and the general fund and also the SPOLOST fund, a combination of LMIG, general fund, and SPOLOST. Mr. Jones to report.
Morning.
Good morning.
Finance advertised the DOT 2024 Asphalt Contract Project One. Project consisted of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on all or a portion of 10 county roads, a total of 17.03 miles. The work is in Post Two and Four. Seven bidders submitted bids and proposals for this work. The bids were opened on February 2nd, and Bartow Paving was the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $7,632,334.70. This bid was 13.3% lower than the county estimate, and like you said, Chairman, the work will be funded using LMIG, SPOLOST, and general funds, and the project has a completion date of October 31, 2024.
Tell the audience what LMIG stands for.
Why'd you put me on the spot like that? Local Maintenance Improvement Grants. Basically, funds, taxpayer funds allocated by the state of Georgia through GDOT to put towards roadway-type projects. It could be paving, it could be sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. Typically, the counties utilize it for paving.
And as we all know, the General Assembly that's in session right now has added, first of all, every year's the budget, and they've added 200,000, wait, 200 million. What is it? They've added a lot of money.
They've added some, they've added extra money, absolutely. And again, you know, the LMIG, I'll go through a little bit now that you asked me, but you know, our formula is based, is based on our number of county maintained roads miles versus the state total maintained public road miles and also the county population compared to the population of the state of Georgia. So there's a formula that, that's how we get our allotted amount.
Thank you for that additional information. And then item five this year is also, George, DOT and Finance recommend award of the 2024 Asphalt Project Contract Two to the low bidder Bartow Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $5,573,228.82. Roads scheduled to be in the contract are located in Post One, Three, and Four. Project will be funded by general funds and SPOLOST funds.
Again, on this, Finance advertised the DOT 2024 Asphalt Project Contract Two. The work consisted of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on 26 county roads and streets, total of 13.7 miles. The work is in Post One, Three, and Four. Seven bidders submitted proposals for this work. The bids were opened on February 2nd, 2024, and on this one also, Bartow Paving was the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $5,573,228.82. This bid was 6.1% lower than the county estimate. The work will be funded through SPOLOST and general funds, and this project also has a completion date of October 31, 2024.
George, you already have a list of what the priority is for the roads to be resurfaced?
We don't at this time. You know, we have the list of roads itself, and again, when we put these contracts together, staff puts them in an area where they're typically geographically located, so there's not a whole lot of movement around. You don't want to go from like, say, the southeast part of the county all the way to northwest. We put them in an area to try to basically maximize the cost. You know, we don't want to obviously spend a lot of time with, like I said, getting equipment back and forth, so we try to put some, you know, some thought into that.
I hope you just meant minimize the cost, not maximize the cost.
Yes, minimize, yes.
Thank you.
George, in Post Two, what are some of the roads that we're looking at?
In your post, I believe there's a, what is it? You put me on the spot here. Let me look at it right now. There's a good portion of roads, I know that. The LMIG contract had that in. I can't think of any off the top of my head. I know there's a bunch of them, but...
I've got them right here, I'm sorry. It's a...
Let me see.
Pretty large area as far as Goldmine Road, Golden South, Holly Springs Road, Mulberry Rock, Ray Cole Road, Townsend Road, New Georgia School Road, Paul Harrison Seals. Does that sound about right?
That's right. I found the numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess it is here in the backup reading, the different companies, were any other companies competitive?
Yeah, I mean, the bids were, you know, they ranged, like on this particular contract, the bids ranged from $5,573,228 to $8,229,836. The Bartow bid was $527,000 lower than the next responsive bidder, which was Northwest Georgia Paving. Contract One was very similar. The, the next lowest bidder on that one was Northwest Georgia Paving, and that particular bid, it was about $458,000 lower, the Bartow bid, than the Northwest Georgia Paving.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
This morning, we don't have any reports from committees or departments, so no public participation on agenda items either. So the consent agenda, I'm supposed to read here in the mornings, the morning session, work session, consideration of the following agenda items, consent agenda items. Item six is to approve the chairman's nomination of Commissioner Sandy Caker as chairwoman, pro tem. Excited about that. Item seven is the Paulding County Sheriff's Office would like to request the commission to retire or surplus Major Clint Morris's and Captain Deidre Morris's service weapons. Major Morris retired October 27, 2023, last year, and Captain Morris retires next month, March the 13, 2024. Both meet the required policy in order to retire a service pistol. Item eight is to adopt the county administration's job classification for Special Projects Director. And item nine is action to nominate and confirm Scott Green to the position of Special Projects Director. And item 10 is to dissolve and remove the current job descriptions for the Director of Operations and the Director of Public Services in the County Administration Department and completely eliminate both Paulding County, both of these Paulding County jobs in the class inventory, the job class inventory. And finally, number seven under consent agenda is action to surplus 540 Cisco phone headsets, handsets, for action, trade, or donation. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of these consent agenda items to new business for consideration? More discussion. Hearing none, we'll leave them where they are in the consent agenda. This morning, we have no old business. Under new business, item 12 is to discuss action to approve the May 1, 2024 Employee Benefits Plan renewal. As will be presented, Ms. Palmer already coming forward, and we have two guests. I'll just let you introduce them, Tara.
We have Tammy Starkey for NFP and Todd, Todd, I'm NFP, that's going to help me out today if you have any questions. First of all, I'd just really like for y'all to remember Deputy Allen Raystraw's family. Deputy Raystraw will be laid to rest tomorrow, so just want to make sure you keep that family in your thoughts and prayers, please. So we're at the point that we are every year that we have to renew our benefits. This is a vital part to recruitment and retention. So what we did this year, NFP, Tammy and her team sent out a market analysis. We got the quotes back, and the quote that returned from Aetna was 57% increase. So Tammy and her team worked, and we got that down to a 34% increase, but that means that we're going to go back to Anthem. We have a good relationship with Anthem. We had them for the last few years, so I'm confident this, this will be a great move for the employees. They'll have no interruption in services. Everything will go under one umbrella because Anthem already holds our short and long-term disability. They hold our vision, so this will be a move back to where we were. We did have to tweak the plan a little bit. We changed some of the deductibles. We are going with a self-funded plan, and we will go up on employee contributions 10%, but just remember those are pre-tax. We have rate guarantees for most of our other things through Anthem. We've got a guarantee on vision and dental through 2026 on our basic life, accidental death, short and long term. We have that until '27, and then we did not have any increase in Aflac. We're still going to have the MedCom, and we'll still have the EAP services, but they'll just all be offered through Anthem. Anthem has brought forth a very robust wellness plan that I think is going to be great for employees, going to be much more engaged. We're going to really start reaching out to the employees and seeing what they need. We're going to have a lot more interaction with Anthem, so I'm really excited about what that's going to bring to our employees and hopefully help bring our costs down because that was one of the major factors in the increase is our, our claims are up as well as inflation costs. Everything's going up, so I think this is a good move, and I think it's going to be good for employees. We've heard a lot of good things about Blue Cross, so we're going to make that change back. So, do you all have any questions?
Did we have a really high claims, costs this year?
Claims, claims were at 129%. Mm-hmm, we sure did. And those claims are something that necessarily could not be helped. I mean, those, those are illnesses that, that could not be helped.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Everybody good? No other questions?
I have a question. Is this going to be a high deductible plan that would allow for an HSA?
No.
Okay.
It will not, uh-uh.
Okay. Have we looked at those? I guess we have.
We haven't looked at those quite yet. I mean, we've got our HRA account, so, but we have not looked at a HSA yet. We're not to that point, but it may be in the near future that we might have to look at that if we, we don't kind of get our claims under control.
Tara, you might also enlighten us on the training that you all do. I think that's very significant. This room would be full of employees come what may, or...
Yep. We do open enrollment training, so what happens is we have our employees, we schedule them virtual and also in-person, so we encourage, at least, you know, every person needs to come because you need to know about your insurance. You need to hear about what's going on, especially this year since we're making the transition back, but we do have in-person, that the employees will come in. We'll have what's called enrollers that'll come in, and that's going to be in the afternoon, and those individuals will come in, they'll go over your plan, they'll explain it to you, you can make changes, you can make changes to your beneficiaries, and they can help you, walk you through the open enrollment process and if you've got any questions. But NFP will bring their team out, and so they'll be here with us the whole time going through all that stuff. And you can also do it online, and you can also phone it in if you, if you can, but we'll be playing those recorded enrollment messages so you can go home, you can sit with your, your significant other, your spouse, whatever you do, need to do to cover that information, so you can make a wise decision on open enrollment.
Todd, Tammy, you have anything you'd like to add?
Tara did a great job. I know that Tara mentioned the claims increase, and so that is a focus, you know, as we work with the team here to improve the trend of the claims because, as she mentioned, many of them are not avoidable, but some of them are lifestyle-related type conditions. And so as we work with Anthem and their enhanced wellness program that they have offered and their funding, it will be to make sure that members are engaged with preventive care, that they are receiving those annual physicals, they're receiving their cancer screenings, that Anthem is reaching out when there are gaps in care for someone that has not received a screening or already has a chronic condition and is not following up on care or following up on their prescriptions. So that will help improve the trend so that we don't continue to see these significant increases year over year. So I think Anthem has proposed a great program to help us accomplish that and working with the team, focusing very much on those lifestyle-related conditions, education, identification of risk factors that may be unknown.
Thank you. Todd?
I did a great job.
All right. Okay. Thank you all, it was a great job.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the last new business item. Item 13, discuss action to adopt Resolution 2024-4 imposing a 120-day moratorium on the acceptance of construction plans involving the use of sewer lift stations. That sounds like an exciting subject.
Good morning. Currently, we're working on the specifications and updating the UDO and giving everyone a path on how they needed to go step by step to develop property, which is also developing water and sewer on our property. Currently, we refer to our master plan, but we don't have a step-by-step plan on how to deal with pump stations. Currently, we have 51 pump stations in our system. One of the things we're doing is we're evaluating, you know, operational costs, capital improvements, we're redoing our master plan, and we're trying to tie everything together. So if you want to develop in the county, and it may possibly need to go to a pump station, it gives a path forward so a developer understands what steps they would need to go to if their property was in a situation where they may need this. It also gives us a chance to back up and put the property, proper ordinances in place so that we can also follow, and the board understands how we're looking at things when they come through, and it goes with the new master plan that's being done as well. We think we can, we've asked for 120 days. We hope to be less than that, but we've asked for 120-day, basically moratorium upon the acceptance of plans involving lift stations to develop this for you.
Thank you. Ray, do you mind explaining to the public, because not everybody works with lift stations every day, what that means in terms of like what it does, and then what that means for the county down the road? If, for instance, if a development puts in three lift stations, who maintains that afterwards, and how much does that generally cost? Like what's a repair on a lift station kind of thing?
Okay, well, I guess the easiest way to start is water and sewer, we, we love mother nature because everything that flows by gravity will continue to flow by gravity. When someone puts in a pump station or more than, you know, asks for more than one pump stations, our average pump station we touch every day if we can, or multiple times a week, and we have crews that go to all 51 stations. So there's maintenance cost involved. It usually runs about $50,000 a year is what we're looking at. Some stations can go up as high as, you know, $100,000 if we're replacing pumps and having to change the motherboard out and everything that controls pump stations. The reason we like to develop our master plan to use mother nature more is because for every pump station in perpetuity, we've got to maintain a facility that will take sewer flow, pump it up to a place to where we can get to gravity, and mother nature can take it from there. That involves maintaining the force mains, maintaining individual pumps and replacing them, and they usually will last eight to 10 years is about average, and these pumps are expensive to replace. But what we're looking at as a whole is to transfer from, at 51 stations, we're spending about $2.5 million maintaining these annually, and we're trying to be responsible with all the rate payer's money and looking at how we can go to more regional, regional approach to reduce the number of pump stations and build outfall lines where we can, but there are some situations where they may be necessary, and we want to give a path to developers that may need to follow that path and what they need to do to qualify to be able to go down that path.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer?
No, that's great. I just wanted, I mean, I kind of knew because I've been here a minute, but I didn't know that everybody knew that. I think a lot of people don't understand that once a developer puts that in, the water system is responsible for maintaining it forevermore or replacing it even, right?
Correct. If we get to a point to where we can actually tie a few together, we still have to build that additional infrastructure to take it offline, to move it further to where we can combine stations or remove stations.
Ray, clarification, I guess developers don't generally ask for any more pumps or talk about construction plans, design, any more than they know they'll need because they, because, see, they're going to be turning them over to you, so why wouldn't they just request more than they really need?
Pump stations are generally an expensive, inexpensive way to tie a property to sewer. If you knew you were going to have to build a 3,000-foot main to get gravity on, you know, 3,000-foot main is going to cost you, you know, a million and a half, but if you can build a half-million-dollar pump station... But if you can build a half million dollar pump station and give it to the county, then it puts us in a situation where, you know, we end up with a expensive cost to maintain going forward. Whereas if we can work with the developer upfront, then the county won't have to ever worry about taking care of a pump station by getting a developer to work with us to go to gravity sewer. And that way, the ratepayers don't end up with an additional cost that we have to deal with. Did that answer?
Yeah, that's great. Any other comments? And the audience is more educated than they've ever been. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you very much.
That's the conclusion of regular business, ladies and gentlemen. No, no one signed up to sign up to speak on nine agenda items. Any comments or celebrations from the panel here? Everybody quiet this morning?
I would like to thank NFP for coming in. You guys have saved us so much money over the years since, I guess you've been with us, what, this is your fifth or sixth? Fifth. And they have done a great job. They've worked diligently to try to get where we need to be. Unfortunately, this is probably, I think, the first year that we've seen a significant change. So thank you, guys. Thank you very much for what y'all have done.
Good. All right. So we do need executive session this morning on real estate. And I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate with a reminder to everyone that we won't come back in this room to adjourn. We'll adjourn out of the conference room across the hall.
I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate and to adjourn from there.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrier's 4-0 and we stand adjourned. Thanks again for being here.